Call the meeting to order at 7:06. Can you stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I saw the minutes went out earlier today. Do I have a motion for the open session minutes September 11th? Make a motion to approve the open session minutes from September 11th, 2017.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Community comments tonight? And Maria's not here tonight either?
Yeah, Maria, because she's not busy enough, is taking a class to learn to become a translator. And the class meets on Monday nights through October. So we'll probably have somebody pinch-hit for her at her next meeting on October 16th, and she'll be back in time for our first November meeting.
Excellent. Good for her.
Yeah, great kid.
And then we can move on to initial updates.
Okay, so really briefly this evening. First off, I'm really pleased to announce that our district has been selected to be a founding district member of the Excellence in Social Emotional Network, or otherwise known as the Excel Network. I put their website up on the SMARTboard. It's definitely worth visiting. It's excelmass.org. And what this is, is it's a recently formed network that was formed by a lot of the professional organizations, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the Superintendent's Association, the Principals' Association, in conjunction with the Rennie Center, to really raise public awareness and promote reforms related to social emotional learning and really tackling issues but coming up with solutions around student needs, particularly around social emotional health and wellness. So as part of being a founding district in this initial network, it is us and eight other districts, and I listed who they were. The vision of Excel is for us and the eight other districts to kind of be a conduit for current research and best practices related to social emotional learning. By being part of this initial network, we will have access to experts, to current research and various reforms initiatives are related to social emotional learning. So part of the key work this year, and I believe it starts next month with a team. Each district will have a team that will get together on a monthly basis and will be programs and initiatives related to growth mindset. I think we've made a lot of inroads within the district. But I think the emphasis will be particularly at the upper grades. I think in some ways it's very, very easy with the younger kids. When I go into Clough and Memorial, it is very common that I see posters and bulletin boards and constant reminders about really if there's one magic word, it's "yet." So what does that look like at the middle school? What does that look at the high school and so on? So that'll be some of the work that this network will take on. I do want to acknowledge Maureen, who wrote the grant for us being part of the network. I think she did a masterful job, particularly highlighting the work that's been done to date as far as the focus on SEL. Keep in mind, we're one of nine districts, and there was a total of 30 districts that applied to be part of this. So I consider us to be a very, very good company. The second piece that I have is just a reminder, something that I'm a big fan of. And it is the big fundraiser for our end foundation. It is their spooky run on October 30th, the timing works out perfectly. I know the ladies who are on the executive board have gotten a terrific start as far as fundraising. They've gotten a couple large donations for both Charles River Bank and also Imperial. They've got an incredible deal on somebody who's going to actually be doing the timing and all the record-keeping for it. So just as a reminder, it's Sunday, October 29th at 10:00 a.m. And this year, they're also doing a kids' fun run 15 minutes prior to it at 9:45. We've been doing and will continue to do blitzes of our parents. We really want to see this become a family event and have good participation in this. Okay? That's what I've got.
Thank you. Subcommittee updates for the Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee?
Yeah, so right now, we are coming up on our soft and close deadline to get the Superintendent's Evaluation notes completed. So each of us, there was a note out from Joe this week giving instructions on how to update Superintendent's Evaluation Tool, online tool, and all of the information around the objectives for the coming year and what's been accomplished in the past year. So if you could give it your try, and we can give up a little bit of slack there, but not much. We want to be able to say that on October 1st, we're all complete with the surveys as a team. And then I'll spend the following week compiling it and making sure we're ready to report back on the following school committee meeting.
Is there any old business? On to the new business?
Okay, first, we have the one-to-one learning program evaluation presentation. Probably, as this committee knows, probably almost going back to a year ago or a little under a year ago. We conducted a six-month study around some real important essential questions about our one-to-one learning program now that we're in year five of it. So I'm going to turn things over to our Director of Technology Integration, Dave Quinn, who'll introduce the team and kick it off.
Thank you, Dr. Ruschek, Chairman, and the rest of your own body. Very excited to be here today to discuss the findings of our one-to-one learning program evaluation. From the, just about the moment I was hired, one of the first projects that came up in talking to Joe was trying to get a handle on where we were in terms of the growth of our one-to-one learning program in terms of our core values. How well are we using these devices to enhance communication, collaboration, and innovation? We stretched that focus to also look at personalized learning, to look at student-centered learning, and how we are doing in terms of traditional academic metrics, MCAS, et cetera. We spent the first couple of months looking at potential researchers who could do this kind of work. And in the final analysis, it came down to, we had this really unique opportunity to work with Dr. Bevel, who's been doing this type of evaluation programs for schools internationally. And, you know, we also, the SAMR model was a huge focus within our district. And, you know, we could get a lot of folks to give their own spin, but when you have the actual developer of the model who can tell you, give you an accurate answer, we thought it was just too compelling an opportunity to pass up. So this is the byproduct of a six-month study that, as these gentlemen will tell you, close to 60 hours here in our district, talking, observing our teachers, talking to our teachers, talking to our students, talking to some of you folks and some of the parents, to get a really comprehensive view of not only where we are, but where we need to go in order to get to that 21st century district that Dr. Ruschek's been talking about. We've got some really exciting things on the way. And just wanted to turn it over to our exciting research team. Dr. Bevel of Boston College, Dr. Stephen Stemler of Wesleyan University, and Dr. Ruben Predorah, who's an independent consultant who handles our SAMR aspects. So gentlemen?
Thank you very much. So that was a great introduction. It's a real pleasure to be here and have this opportunity to talk about the research that we were able to conduct and our collaboration together. Before we get into anything, just to really applaud the community in the district. A lot of people talk the talk. They say we're about, you know, being reflective and about using data to make decisions. But it's incredibly rare that a district reaches out to a university and says, "We have these critical questions. Can you bring your expertise to our community? And can we work together to figure out how we can progress and evolve our education?" So, you know, first and foremost, thank you for the support. And I hope that you find what we share relevant, interesting, and continues that conversation and evolves it here. You already did a pretty great job introducing the staff. But one of the really notable aspects of this project, for a couple reasons. We were very lucky to have a really incredible team. Dr. Steve Stemler, who's the founder and runs the Psychometrics Lab at Wesleyan University, brought in a really talented team of Wesleyan students. Over the course, many of you remember them in your classrooms and saw them in the hallways. And of course, Ruben brought this amazing, one-in-a-universe experience of having worked with SAMR from its inception and developed it to working with schools all over the world continuously. We were able to latch him in and bring him into this program a few times. So what we're going to try to do this evening, we have three guys who love to talk and who are used to talking for hours and hours. We created a 120-page paper, basically, coming out of our experiences. There was a lot to share. We collected a lot of information. And so what we'd like to do with this presentation is just highlight a few of the main points. We're going to frame it, just talking a little bit about what we were trying to do, the tools that we created to answer some of these questions. And then we'll talk about the data, what we found from your students and your teachers and the greater community. And then we're going to, I'm going to step back as kind of the research data geek and let kind of these practitioner experts talk a little bit about what we do next or sort of recommendations and ideas for the community. And we'll have plenty of time for questions today. But we expect that, you know, this is a lengthy report. There's a lot of information. We're very open to continuing this conversation well beyond tonight. We did a six-month descriptive study. I pulled this slide from our very first presentation to the community just to sort of keep ourselves honest that these were the things that we promised we were going to do. I'm not going to sort of read them over, but what we're, you know, generally, we're trying to paint a pretty broad picture. This was a descriptive study. That meant we didn't have one or two specific questions like, "Do girls outperform boys on the seventh grade MCAS when they have a particular app?" We didn't have specific questions where we needed a pre- or post-design or comparison group. We really just wanted to paint a picture of the practices and perceptions that existed at this snapshot in time over six months into your one-to, you know, about three or four years into the one-to-one evolution. We, the district provided a series of larger evaluation questions kind of to frame this. Again, they weren't very specific, but just general trends that we could explore. And we created a research design, which again, I'm going to talk a little bit about in tools for the community to answer these questions, specifically and customized for this community. One of the products out of this work together is you now have these tools. We are not, you know, saying they're proprietary, they're ours. We would like nothing more than you to think about how you can take some aspects of these and internalize. And the technology that exists today and into the future will only make that easier as a community and will help with that process. So the tools that we designed are not just tools for answering these questions, but they can essentially serve you well into the future in our products of this collaboration. One of the most visible aspects of our work were the classroom observations we conducted. Close to 60 hours of time was spent in the classrooms, both at Misco, right up through the high school. This looks at the number of minutes from grade five through grade 12. For whatever reason, seventh grade, we didn't spend as many minutes observing seventh grade classes. There were a large number, you know, we had a good number of observations at every grade level, but sometimes they were cut short by the end of the day, lunch periods, things like that. But generally, we feel pretty confident that we had a broad selection of subject areas represented and grade levels represented. And we looked at a lot of different things that were going on in those classrooms. And I think those tools are going to be useful to get in the future. We created a new student surveys and teacher surveys. These went out between March and June, I believe, for the most part. We ended up getting 102 completed teacher surveys that we were able to work with. All of this research was under the purvey of Boston's College Institutional Review Board and Human Subjects Review. Because we are this external institution and we're working with your students' data, so we needed to actually get parent permission before we could access the data that was collected in the surveys from our kids. That was a very easy process for the teachers. As part of the teacher survey, everyone, I believe, but one teacher in the entire district gave us permission to use the data. With the parents' letters going home, we ran into a problem. Not with the parents were saying, "No, kids can't take the survey," but the process of bringing those letters back in was challenging. And we ended up only with about a 60% working response rate from our survey. Still pretty confident that that represents the majority of student voice and sort of captures the arc of student experience and perception. But if you were doing this research internal, you would not need to go through that process. And you'd be looking at a close to 95% response rate for both. We wanted to fill out the story a little bit more, and we talked to kids. We talked to students, and we even talked to some parents at the request of the district. And one of the ideas here was to complement and triangulate those survey results and also provide a more in-depth, deeper layer experience, really hear from the kids themselves, the students themselves, and provide some examples. So we have surveys, we have focus groups, we have time in the classroom. We've created these tools to be able to capture some information, and we applied pretty vigorously. And so what did we learn? First and foremost, we saw a robust degree of student-teacher technologies. You all see this walking through the classroom. Technology is an integral part of student-and-teacher experience across the vast majority of classrooms and for the vast majority of students, teachers, and community members that we worked with in this study. We did find, when we looked closer at the data, that there was more frequent use happening at the high school or in the upper-grade levels than we saw in grades five through eight at Misco. And a lot of that use, or some of that use, was at what we would consider a higher level or had, was progressing with sort of a higher educational objective for the technology use than we saw in many of the middle school classrooms. And Ruben will talk about that. Your students and teachers are very positive in general. This is a great positive community. We saw that just being here. But the surveys confirmed that. And students and teachers specifically really felt that there was a good promise to technology and a lot of opportunities and positive benefits coming from the implementation as it exists today and from just these larger ideas of what educational technology can bring to learning. So a lot of positive sentiment, a lot of practice, and I think a lot of potential for evolving that practice further. And because it was, you know, sort of the three pillars of this program were innovation, communication, collaboration, we sought to provide some examples of that through these instruments. So we're going to pause for a second and sort of move from talking about the study to talking about specific results. And again, we're going to go through fairly quickly. All of this is documented. The slides are already, I think, circulated and available. And the report can be very soon as well. So we'll go through this kind of quickly. This is a metric that looks at from zero to 180. And it basically represents the number of days in a school year. Okay, roughly. And we've converted all of the metrics of how often students in dark blue and teachers in light blue use technology in class. So this is self-reported. The students reported how often they themselves use technology. And we asked them, "How often are teachers using technology?" And you can see, again, if 90 equals every other day, again, of 180 days in the school year, we see in almost every subject area, at least every other day, student use. Math lagging behind some of the other subject areas, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And typically, we see more teacher use than student use on average. So this is a pretty, this is like the 30,000-foot flyover. Okay? One of the questions that the district had was, "How do we contextualize what's going on in our community in this greater sense of one-to-one evolution and teaching and learning?" And so what I was able to do is take some, a few of your survey questions and find a parallel group. And what I was able to do is find a very similar group of 12,000 one-to-one students from grades four through 12, so very similar in age, and looked at their frequencies in these same subject areas. And all of them didn't translate perfectly. I mean, what's, you know, English class isn't English class when you're in France, right? But for the most part, language arts, you know, they're fairly comparable. And what we see, just ballpark, again, the purpose of this study isn't to say is Mendon using technology more or less than international averages, but we see they're very closely aligned. They're within that ballpark. They look fairly similar. And the patterns that we see, the student use being less than teacher use is repeated. And we see sort of that challenge for student use, particularly in math class, repeated internationally. So we get a little context to these results. Then we dive in a little deeper. And again, I'm just going to cherry-pick a few findings so we make sure we have time for our distinguished guests helping us. But students described using technology in a wide variety of ways. And here, I plot the average in purple for Misco Hill Kids and in yellow for NIPMO. And things like collaborating using technology. Kids are talking, on average, that was 50 times a school year. So a couple times a week on average, almost every other day. Taking notes in class, researching a topic, analyzing the web for trustworthiness, submitting assignments electronically, one of the most frequent uses. We saw that over and over again. It peaked at the high school. Again, we see most of these peaking at high school levels. Again, high school tended to use the devices more frequently and in more ways than we saw in the middle school. To just sort of step back, what this tells us is that students are using technology in a very broad number of ways, a wide variety of ways, to serve their learning. It's not just taking notes in class or submitting assignments. We see that happening, but we see all these other components as well. So it's important to just sort of step back and realize that our own individual experiences might not have all of these aspects. And then finally, again, as I said before, the student attitudes were very high. This just looked at how much kids enjoy being in school, how much they learn. And all of these numbers are fairly positive. And when we ask kids specifically about how technology is impacting their day-to-day lives, it was almost very positive. So how well you communicate with your teachers, 47%, one out of two. Misco students said it's improved with technology. At NIPMO, that's like two out of three kids. And in both schools, you see about one out of 10 students, so a small minority, feeling that communication has declined. But for the vast majority of kids, it's either positive or, you know, it's like the carpet or tile floor. It really makes no difference to them. So a lot of student voice captured across the survey, very positive attitudes and a lot of use. And we're able to sort of look for trends and patterns within that report. Then we move to the teacher survey. Again, we surveyed how frequently teachers were using technology on this 180-point scale representing days out of the year. We see some of the most frequent uses at the top are maintaining or accessing administrative records. These are things happening behind the scenes. Using Google Drive, using the computer to deliver instruction, lesson planning. So again, like students, we see teachers using technology for a fairly wide variety of professional purposes. It's not just lesson planning. It's not just standing in front and projecting lessons. We see a pretty good spectrum of use. And when we ask what kids are doing, or teachers are doing with their students, again, we see them echoing those student results with teachers saying, you know, about 70% of the time, students are using iPads in class at the high school compared to about 60% of the time at the middle school on average. And then we kind of break down what's happening in that time. Sometimes students are working collaboratively, they're working individually. Sometimes students present topics. So again, we're painting a broad picture of teaching and learning practices as a snapshot in time. Teachers, again, were very positive. Teachers in general felt the technology made them more enthusiastic, made their classes more enjoyable. And overall, the most positive finding across any of our attitudinal skills, which really relates nicely to your theme, was makes me a more collaborative teacher. Teachers were quite strongly, strong in their opinion that this was something that was really helping collaboration. So then we move to focus group results. And this is kind of where it gets a little more personal, a little more fun. We've sort of painted the picture of that 30,000-foot flyover. We can see what practices and attitudes look like, but this gives us a little more visceral feeling of what kids were saying. You know, kids reflect in a lot of ways about their overall experience. And these were just some of our favorite ones. We also looked at the focus groups specifically to look at innovation. How can we find examples from the students and teachers and parents, how they view innovation today in the Mendon-Upton community? And we hear from teachers around differentiation, the opportunities of presenting. We hear from students around using iPass and checking grades. We hear about keeping organization together for kids and how important that is. And then lastly, you know, we have that parent voice. And largely, you know, parents really thought, when we think about innovation and communication, this was a game changer.
Sure, yeah. So, you know, to keep going with this, you know, communication. You see, again, you know, lots of different examples of ways that students and teachers use it. And parents in particular, when we talk to parents, they really appreciated the idea that they could get online and figure out whether grades were due, if people were sick and out. It was a lot easier to sort of communicate the information that was missed and for them to catch up than it used to be. So lots of good ways to enhance communication with this. Collaboration, again, like Damian said, doing more collaboration as a whole because of technology. Easier because of Google Docs. That was, you know, one of the things that's come out is, you know, from doing lots of observations is that, you know, they love the Google Docs. Everybody likes to collaborate using that. In terms of implementation, there were some challenges. Sometimes, technology was a distraction for students. This is from the focus groups that we talked about. We'll talk about the observations in a moment. But this just happened, talking to the students and the parents and the teachers, say, you know, what were the big challenges? Often, the students and the teachers noted network connectivity problems as being an area, projector, smart boards, all this sort of thing. And, you know, take home responsibilities, which, you know, having a middle school son who has to bring his technology home now, I get that. You know, sometimes they don't charge it up, and that's the thing. Specifically, when we went in and took a look at the classrooms, and, you know, just want to pause here for a moment because I had the pleasure and opportunity to do a lot of observations. And I really appreciate both the high school and the middle school for hosting us on this. You know, it was terrific to get in there, and the students really appreciated the opportunity to get in there and observe what was going on. These results really complement a lot of what Vince said, but dive a little bit deeper and put a little bit more texture to it. So in terms of what specific problems we're talking about, these were based on observations. When we were in the classroom, we're taking notes. How many students, you know, what percentage of times did students have dead or missing devices? And, you know, sort of 16%, this kind of big thing. Device malfunction, that could have been the smart board. That could have been, you know, with smart board malfunction, other device malfunction, their computer wasn't working for some reason, couldn't get on the network. These were relatively rare. You're talking about one in 10 observations. But these things can be emotionally charged for teachers. If you're in the middle of doing a lecture and the device doesn't work, that's frustrating. And so you hear it a little bit more in the focus groups from an emotional standpoint. Okay, so one thing to mention here with technology, too. The fascinating thing that both me and the other students have brought to observe was there wasn't a lot of distraction going on that we observed for students. Sometimes they'd take out their phone, they'd check it. It would be very quick. It was not disruptive, and they were done. I was pretty impressed with that overall, actually, because I thought, "Ah, here's this technology. It's going to cause all these kinds of problems." And sure, every now and then you'd get something. But typically, teachers didn't spend a lot of time coming down on them. Students were pretty respectful. They got through it quick. This one has a ton of information on it. I'm not going to go through everything here. There's just a couple of key points I want to extract. Here, again, related communication innovation. Here, again, related communication, innovation, collaboration. Regarding communication, these are the observations, we did, you know, 129 classroom observations that this data is based on. Far and away, the most frequently used technology for communication was Google Classroom, people using that all the time. Now, keep in mind, you know, all these other ways of using technology for communication, it's not the case that these were mutually exclusive, and again, we're in there just, you know, getting snapshots. So maybe they're using the smart board one day, and the next day they're using Google Classroom, and the next day they're using iPass. You wouldn't expect teachers to be using all these things all the time, so that's why the numbers look a little low, it's because, you know, if you add, they're not mutually exclusive because sometimes they do more than one, but you can't quite add them all the up, but they're also not as low as they look. In terms of innovation, I think there were really a couple of categories that stood out to me, that I, you know, that we observed in looking through all the notes of the observations. How do students use technology? This is the intriguing thing about the project from my point of view, was the surveys say, okay, they're using iPads in the classroom, or using it in pairs, but what does that mean? And just to extract a couple of points here, they were doing things related to, you know, photographs was a really big deal that they could do, video recordings that they couldn't do without the technology. And this got implemented a large part in language and music class, they could videotape themselves speaking, they were a lot more comfortable doing that, and then they'd play it back or play an instrument, and they could hear themselves and reflect, you know, watch instructional videos, this sort of thing. Commenting anonymously is another use of technology, which I think is important at the middle school levels, because you don't have that peer pressure problem, so they could use anonymous commenting on things. Assessment, as most of you probably know, there's some really interesting ways that assessment gets used, these quizlets, the students enjoy it, they engage with it. One of the more interesting ones we observed was a smart video-based assessment, where the students had to watch a video, do the assessment, if they didn't get the answer right, it started the video back over, and they had to do that again. So that was interesting. And then the last comment I have on this is enhancing student work. So there's certain apps that are used to enhance their particular project that are content-based, you know, Chrome Music, et cetera. But the most interesting thing that I observed was sort of a class that was doing a project on Greek mythology, and they did this, and then they were gonna do a writing assignment after, and the teacher said, okay, remember three months ago when we did this writing assignment? It's actually on your Google Drive, you can go back and you can extract from that and pull that in and take some pieces of that to build on what you're doing here. That, to me, was a very interesting and innovative use of technology. Oops, wrong computer. And finally, I'll comment on the collaboration. And I think, you know, one of the collaboration pieces that sums it up for me was I remember observing a particular classroom, and the notes I had at the time were, the students were seated in groups of four, but they're all working on a shared document. Everyone was extremely engaged the whole period, the teacher was sitting in the front of the room looking at the shared document. They didn't know what he was doing at the time, he was looking at his computer. And then the teacher says, hey, nobody's written anything for this particular area, so he asks the students to fill in the gaps with the notes. As they're working on the Google Doc, one student says, I wish I could thumbs up some of these comments that people made in the text, because they're really good, the other students, because they're all working on the same document. Teacher says, hey, if any, that's a really good idea, if anyone reads a peer connection that you like, just put a plus sign before it. Another student says, I did that, I made hearts for that. Teacher replies, this will be very helpful for you in studying connections that peers made. And at the end of the class, one student says, imagine if all, if we all just did collaborative things all the time, that'd be so awesome, look, we're almost done. And, you know, that for me was really striking, I'm sitting in the back, and he doesn't, you know, forgotten I there. And so that speaks to the power of collaboration for this. Okay, now I gotta turn it over to Ruben to talk.
All right, so thank you, Steve. All right, so let me talk a little bit about SAMR, I'll make sure everybody understands how the model works. SAMR models are developed to address the question of what makes a difference when you use technology in education. And by the way, we're talking here today about computer technology, but the same type of analysis could be used, for instance, if you were talking about learning space design. So that's something else to keep in mind. And what I found is that you can't just look just at the technology on its own, or just at what teachers are doing on its own, you have to look at the combination, the intersection of the two, and that defines four levels of usage. So at the substitution level, you're talking about using the new technology to do something you were doing with an old technology in much the same way. So before you were reading paper books, now you're reading an ebook. Before, you were highlighting by taking a yellow marker and, you know, making lines in your book, now you're using your index finger to draw a line through the ebook, et cetera. Before, we were using a paper map that we stuck little flags in, now I use a digital map and I stuck, and I stick little digital pins. All of that is very valuable use, all of that is a very powerful use, it allows me to set the base for what I'm going to do with other things. But one thing about the substitution level type usage is it does not introduce any major changes in student outcomes. In other words, on average, the result is very, very small impact on student outcomes indeed. So it's important to realize that substitution level usage is very important, it's crucial to a lot of tasks, but by itself, it isn't going to move the needle significantly forward in terms of student outcomes. Things start getting a little more interesting when you go to augmentation, where you're saying, well, what about the new enhancements that technology brings to the table that I couldn't do before? So before my book, I could highlight all I wanted, but I wasn't going to miraculously go poof and give me a summary of everything I highlighted, but a digital book can do that. That's an augmentation level use that I can make in a class. If I have a digital map, it can have as many layers as I like. Now, if you've ever used onion skin on a traditional map, you know that that little game ran out after three layers of onion skin, if you're lucky, if you could buy a really good onion skin. And you can only stick so many flags on a map before it starts falling to pieces, and you can't see what the flags are anymore. But there's no amount of those limitations on a digital map, I can connect to other media, I can have multiple layers that I turn on, off, hide, show, et cetera. So all of those are augmentation level type uses. I'm using the technology much as I did before, but now it's significant enhancements that were unavailable to me with the earlier technology. If I look at the impact upon student outcomes, I see small but definitely measurable impacts on student outcomes here. So these two levels taken together, which are, again, I don't emphasize, there's no paterative connotation on any of these labels, okay, these are two very important levels, are taken together, I call them the enhancement levels because of the size of impact upon student outcomes, which is small overall. Interesting things start happening though when we go to modification, where we say, okay, hold on. So far, we've been keeping what we were doing with the technology much the same as we were before, for the same goals as before, but suppose we keep the heart of what we're doing for the same reasons that we were doing it before, but we change significantly aspects that surround what we're doing because of the new affordances of the technology. Before, I might have asked my students to just turn in a document to me, and if I just asked them to, instead of typing it in or writing it up on a sheet of paper and giving it to me to give me a Google Doc, that's straight substitution. But suppose I say, no, hold on, why don't you post it on a blog? Now, if I'm the only one reading the blog, I'm still at straight substitution. It's important to realize that just the technology itself doesn't change the rules of the game. But if I say, no, hold on, I want your classmates to read this, and I want them to provide commentary, and I want you to respond to that commentary and rewrite, I've now taken what used to be an individual writing task to a social writing task. So I kept the heart of the matter the same, for whatever reason, I'm asking my students to write small pieces, et cetera, throughout this course, but I've significantly shifted the content in terms of where it's placed relative to its context, just to make this social writing environment, which we know is more powerful, gives the students an authentic audience, it has very important impacts, and that's something I couldn't do easily or at all with the older technology. We've all tried the old, let's photocopy something and send it around, it doesn't work, it's not a social medium, it falls apart after about three classes. The blog and its whole system of comments and so on allows for this type of social environment that allows for a modification level type usage. Here, I start seeing significant impact upon student outcomes, roughly double what I see at the augmentation level, if I'm measuring this in terms of an effect size upon student outcomes. So this is not just a small linear increase as though it were from substitution to augmentation, it's roughly double what I see at augmentation. And when I go to redefinition, it's when I say, okay, let's do something completely new. Something I couldn't do with the old technology, I couldn't have thought of doing with the old technology. So for instance, if I'm asking students to do video, again, just doing video by itself doesn't imply any particular level. If I ask the students to just video themselves doing the same stand and deliver they did before, that's straight substitution. But if I ask them, no, hold on, I want you to think as a movie director would, how would you construct a piece to say, use, for instance, with younger students, so you put the student in a position of being a mentor to them, so it's a piece in video that will be used to teach younger students. It's a piece in video that they have to think about, they have to put it with this social machine that I talked about, for instance, at the modification level, so they get feedback to see how effective it is as a teaching tool. Re-edit, reconstruct it according to that. That's an activity that, between the video editing portion and the social portion, is completely inconceivable with the old technology. Well, we could conceive of it, but we just wouldn't have been able to make it happen. This type of activity is at the redefinition level, when we start to construct new activities. Another example, there have been excellent results, for instance, in terms of using games, where students are playing social games to explore aspects of biology, medicine, and so on. And again, this is a very different experience from just read about the disease, or read about how, say, general whoever discovered a vaccine for smallpox, et cetera, rather puts them in the position of playing out the discovery process, again, a redefinition level usage. And the impact here is the highest of all, because it's roughly double what we see at modification levels. So what you have here with SAMR, all of the levels are good, all of the levels represent worthwhile uses of technology, but the impact upon student outcomes goes from very small to small but measurable, to roughly double, to roughly double again. So those last two levels, because of that doubling, are what I call the transformation levels. And that's why you want to try to get to that, because it's not just a small incremental improvement in student outcomes, it's where you start to see huge improvements in student outcomes. All right, so I want to spend a little bit on the backdrop to make sure we're all on the same page. Let's look at what the analysis showed. One thing, when Damian contacted me about this project, that I was very happy to hear, was that we were going to have all this wonderful range of data. This is my preferred way of doing a SAMR analysis, having the observations and the focus groups and the surveys, because it allows me to have a very good, very well-rounded picture, it allows me to address a whole series of questions beyond, okay, so what's the average level of use SAMR wise that I'm observing? It allows me, for instance, to address a question such as, how does the faculty overall respond to the technology? And am I looking at a scenario where perhaps there's a higher-than-average percentage of faculty that are not happy with or recalcitrant in terms of use of technology? I'm happy to say that that is not the case at all here. One thing I can tell from the analysis is when I look at the distribution of usage and everything, if anything, you have in fact a lower-than-average percentage of faculty that is sort of holding out in terms of what they can do with technology, that's very good news. And that's one of the important pieces of information. And a second piece of information also comes from the analysis, that I'll mention before I get into this diagram, is that no matter what the usage of the technology that was reported in the observations, the focus groups, and the surveys, it is consistent with the mission you've defined. In other words, I'm, sometimes I'll see, well, that's a very nice substitution level use, but has nothing to do with your mission. So even though it's very good, you've got a mismatch, that's not the case here. The match to communication, collaboration, innovation is beautiful. So again, no matter what level, it doesn't matter what level you're looking at, there's a very good match to your mission. Now, so far so good. So what I observed then from this, well, when I look at the overall percentage of usage of the technology, and say, okay, so what level does this lie at, I found this type of ratio. So at the substitution level, about 64% at Misco and 53% at NIPMO, and then higher augmentation, somewhat higher at the high school, and again, a modification, redefinition, eventually small at Misco, and a small percentage at the high school. Well, this tells me, well, again, as I've said before, there is no paterative connotation to any of these levels. So there's nothing wrong with this, I did not see any evidence of misuse of technology. But it is high on the substitution level, and the distribution is indicative of a particular profile that, when we get to recommendations, I'll have some additional comments to make, that says that the schools could use a type of, what I call a gentle push forward, to get these numbers up. The numbers are not bad, I really want to emphasize that, but they are lower at augmentation, modification, redefinition than is desirable for long-term development and sustainability. Now, one more analysis that I do alongside the SAMR analysis to say, what's the distribution of the usage of the technologies across different categories of tools? And in a different model that I developed called the EdTech Quintet, there are five major categories. Social, which are the tools that we use to communicate, collaborate, here where we collaborate with each other. Visualization tools allow us to take an abstract concept by seeing it in two or three dimensions, make it more understandable, so we're talking about digital maps, digital timelines, visualizations of numbers, et cetera. Digital storytelling, creating stories from digital media. Mobility, the type of use that says, because the device is no longer chained to a wall, where do we use it in the world at large? What type of use will we make? And finally, educational gaming, which are uses that leverage the particular aspects of games to get powerful results. What I saw here is, as usual, these days in schools, social swamps everything else out, just the use of LMS practices, type tools, Google Doc sharing, et cetera, tends to swamp everything out. So this is very good, you know, it's not, this is not anonymous, that this is this high. And again, as in the previous slide, I see a little bit more use, for instance, quite a bit more use of digital storytelling at the high school, a little bit more use at Misco of visualization, but overall, all of these other bars, just like the previous ones, well, there's nothing wrong, the uses that I've seen in all of the data indicate solid match to your objectives. All of these, I would say, it would be worthwhile seeing what can be done to have these edge up to about where digital storytelling is at the high school, and these two edge up to somewhere around 10% or so. Again, those numbers are not meant as, this is a recipe, it's rather the type of profile that is associated with sustainable mixes of practice overall. So that's, in a nutshell, the SAMR EdTech Quintet analysis, and I'll turn it back over to Damian now.
Great. Which computer are we trying to use? We ran out of time, Ruben. Okay, let's see if we can. There we go. So again, thank you, Ruben, you know, again, we collected a lot of data, we analyzed it looking for just trends and practices, and then Ruben was able to take all of that data and then sort of provide a number of different filters, including the SAMR and the EdTech Quintet, which makes it a little more accessible, a little more easier to find where to start with the data. And so, again, you're getting recommendations from researchers, practitioners, in general, based on what we found in the six-month observation. We really think, you know, the report has a lot of information, it's gonna take some time to digest that, and we want to recognize that. As I said before, we've created some newly developed research methodology tools for getting teacher voice, teacher practices, student voice, student practice. How can you continue to use those into the future to monitor and, you know, basically track to see, are you where you want to be? And ultimately, how can you start to define and track success indicators? How can you look at these broader school missions and the vision of the community and start to see, are we pushing in those directions? And how can we become a more robust data-informed culture? I think there's some opportunities to sort of self-evaluate the device and the hardware within the system. There is some data, particularly within the high school, and questions, perceptions around laptops versus smartphones versus iPads in school and how kids are using those, and there's some, definitely some opportunity for thought and reflection. As Ruben pointed out, there's a lot of opportunities for broadening the kinds of technology practices we see across the SAMR model, more augmentation, modification, redefinition. We see opportunities to local, to focus PD, perhaps a little more curricular and pedagogically focused. Again, teachers had some ideas in the focus groups about that that we shared, that, again, contextualized nicely with the data practices that we report. And that might, you know, help understand why math teacher needs at the high school may be very different than a social studies teacher's needs at the middle school, and there's a lot of opportunity there. As we step back and sort of think about Ruben's perspective and this practitioner, where do we go from here? I think Ruben has this amazing experience, and we'd be remiss not to try to tap into that, to interpret what he saw across the analysis, and I'll step back as the researcher and one of the practitioners speak here.
Thank you. So basically, the question is then, I was talking about what can be done to gently move forward so as to get a broader range of use across the areas of the EdTech Quintet, as well as move usage up to the upper levels of SAMR. And one of the things that I would recommend then is a shared practices approach. A shared practice approach, you're saying, look, here are some technologies, and we're going to have agreement on some subset, these are some examples of the technologies plus a use, it's not just the tool, but it's a technology associated with a use. And these all have a certain characteristic, they can all be adopted quickly and easily at the substitution level, but it's almost a small, tiny little step to take them to augmentation. So they all have this rapid payoff aspect of start at substitution, if you like, but immediately move into augmentation without too much of a hassle. And if you make them a shared practice, then the, what you want in a shared practice is for there to be an agreement among your faculty to say, okay, we're going to agree, doesn't have to be everybody, but the majority would be nice, to say, okay, we agree that we're going to be using these tools, whatever subset we agree upon as shared practices, both within any given grade level across subjects and across grade levels. And this has a double advantage. Advantage number one is it allows for practice to evolve. So if I am now, say, in eighth grade, and I know the students had already experienced, say, doing simple blogging in seventh grade, I'll have to start from scratch, I can assume that they're, I'm building upon that and keep on developing. So I can actually not just say I'm starting already at augmentation in terms of what I'm doing, but I can keep on building, I can build more sophisticated uses that push into the upper levels. And similarly, if I'm looking across subject areas, across disciplines, I can have, say, a history teacher that says, I'm using timelines to talk, have students think about questions of of complex causality or co-causality in historical processes. I can have a biology teacher says, I'm using timelines to talk about, for instance, how meiosis proceeds over time. And I can have a phys ed teacher say, I'm working with the soccer team and what I want my students doing is I want them to understand how tactics and the overall strategy of the game changes as players get more tired, as you see the other team do other things, I'm using timelines to describe that. Well, the fact is, they're all using the same tool for very different purposes, so they have a common shared practice, however, that they can all leverage. None of them is in the position of saying, I have to start from scratch, my students have never seen what the digital timeline is, et cetera. But in addition to that, you have the basis for shared teacher communication about ideas because if you're just talking soccer, meiosis, a historical event, that might not seem like the best basis to start talking about shared elements. But if you have the shared practice as a bridging event, then you can build in very powerful aspects of teacher communication that again, leverage not just what happens with the technology itself, and yes, it does tend to drive towards the upper levels of SAMR, but also in terms of teaching practice in general. It builds bridges to communication and to development of practice. So as I say, these are just some of the examples of shared practices. They span the EdTech Quintet. So if you have a range of practices across, you also tend to diversify what you see in terms of the EdTech Quintet. And then the other two recommendations here have to do with the question of what seems to have been an obstacle or a barrier. One is the question of the network. And whether it's been resolved or not, I think it's very important to communicate that as a narrative to the teachers. They need to have an internal narrative that explains to them what they saw working or not working and why, and why moving forward, what they know they can count on and build upon moving forward. It's less a question of, if you will, just a, not some fault of how you fix it, although that is, of course, an important aspect. It's a question, however, of the mental model that the teachers have that allows them to move forward from what they were perceiving in some cases as an untriable barrier. And finally, the other place to look for is places where teachers have expressed some problems with the iPad hardware. One example, for instance, is the question of a keyboard. Now, a lot of people always think about, well, here I have a laptop, it has a keyboard, an iPad doesn't have a keyboard, therefore it's not as good for entering. That's, well, the thing is, the iPad has a whole range of options for entering data into it. There's not just a glass keyboard on screen, but voice recognition, handwriting recognition, scribbling, all sorts of possibilities. But in many cases, it will help do not just look at saying, okay, how do you get teachers aware of those options? It'll also say that there is a legitimate case perhaps to be made for the keyboard and talk about a possible augment, but building it out as that, not that we're making the iPad into a laptop, but rather saying, and here's another capability, as enough people seem to have a need for this capability, just a few use, say, styles for certain types of scribbling input, you might use a keyboard for that instead. And similar, other aspects related to that. And again, this has to do with the aspect of saying, what type of things tend to encourage people to stay at substitution? Because if a teacher sees something, whether it's the network or the lack of keyboard or something, as a barrier, as we saw in some of the focus groups and observations, some teachers will say, well, I don't want to move out of paper, I'm going to stay close to paper, I'll have paper as a backup because I know that that will always work. Well, that's always pushing you back towards substitution. So you need to make sure that they have a base that is not going to keep them down. So those are some of the recommendations that flow from the SAMR EdTech analysis.
So just in conclusion, we're all available. We're all pretty accessible guys, so we seem to be on the way for 18 hours tomorrow, but other than that, we welcome your comments, we welcome your feedback. This whole evaluation and work has all been a collaborative process. The tools we use, the questions we ask, we were a big pain in your neck a number of times, and many of your administrators asking for information, or can you okay these surveys? Or these focus group scripts look all right? And from that, we were able to present a pretty cohesive picture of teaching and learning practices and hopefully provide you good information for making those next set of decisions to evolve the program and evolve teaching and learning in the directions that you find most relevant and have the best opportunities for your kids here. So thank you for that opportunity. It was a pleasure, yes, thank you.
So when you said we have tools available to us now?
That's correct.
That means that you've developed surveys and evaluation criteria so we can rerun this rapidly?
Yes.
That's correct?
Absolutely.
That's very positive.
Absolutely, yeah.
So when, you know, I looked through a couple of the data points in here and I'm looking at the, well, first of all, in your analysis, and I very much apologize for forgetting your name, but Ruben, you came up with examples of mobility and educational gaming in your EdTech Quintet.
Yes.
Could you repeat what those were again, those examples?
For instance, do you want examples that were observed in the classroom or just examples in general mobility?
Both.
Okay, so for mobility, it's any scenario where you can bring the technology to a place that isn't the traditional, the classroom or the room at home, wherever homework is taught. So mobility you're talking about, for instance, if a student takes it out onto the soccer field, okay? And there's some of the types of uses that works out with the videoing, recording in different scenarios and so on. So a student takes the technology out to the soccer field and records themselves, records the game, and then afterwards uses a telestrator type, no, that's a mobile use. If I have a student who puts sensors and is making a field measurements on biology, that's a mobile use. If a student is going home and they see a bird, they're interested and they snap a shot of it and then they're going to wrap that into a story they're writing or an art piece they're creating, that's a mobile use. So those are mobile tech uses. And for gaming, it's of course a huge range, but that ranges from games that can be used, for instance, simulations are a perfect example. And the standard example I always use is SimCity as a classical example because SimCity is actually built on the MIT Systems Group equations that simulate the city. This goes back to late 50s, early 60s, but evolved since. And while itself as a game, the game is set up so a child can say, well, I want to build the greenest city, the largest city and so on, and that drives their interest forward. But to really get to that greenest, largest city, you have to get a little bit more into the mechanics of what makes a city. Or the example I mentioned, for instance, which is based upon River City, which was developed by Prestadia, some power dedication. And in that scenario, it's, the child is in the position of being a doctor in a settler western town figuring out an ability that's decimated the town. And they only have, of course, they're a tight constraint, you know, I need to figure out how to cure these people before everybody dies. But it acts as an incredible environment. And in terms of the measurements, for instance, in terms of student outcomes for how students learn, it drives the learning incredibly strong.
Yeah, and I think you said it before, but I think you said that it puts a context around the problems they're trying to solve into real-world and maybe even career-oriented goals, which is, that's really cool.
Absolutely right. Absolutely, and it puts this, it puts this student in the engaged position of having to be active relative to, and not just reading about it. I may have read about it, but now I need to do something with it to make something happen. So, yes.
Yeah, that's excellent. That's really, really cool. So we had, we had a couple of numbers in here that, what was the number? It said, how much do you pay attention in class? And we had, we had sort of a negative.
Yes.
What is the meaning of that?
Sure, and so I think, you know, again, it's a little bit of a negative scale, so kids are disagreeing with that statement. So it's a little bit of a double negative. If I'm thinking of actually what you're saying, they're saying, I strongly disagree that I'm being distracted when I use technology. So it's actually in that positive. But that is a very, I think if I was in the community, that would be one of those data points I'd want to track into the future. And I think, you know, we weren't able to present everything that we looked at, even in the report, but that might be something where there's gender differences. There could be differences between high-achieving kids and low-achieving kids. And we know from past research just that how much they use social networks outside of school influences how they respond to a survey question like that, such that the kids with 800 Facebook friends or 1,200 Facebook friends in three hours a day of managing those accounts reports a much higher level of distractibility in class, even if those networks aren't available to them. So again, I think that's an opportunity. It's a data point that's worth looking at in greater detail in the future, and I think that will pay off.
Do you think that if we had greater participation in the student body because the permission slips and everything, do you think that any aspect of the survey would have been emphasized more? Or do you think it's highly representative?
It's a very hard question. As a researcher, you know, I have to be completely, you know, transparent, and we don't, we can't honestly tell you that, we don't know. That said, we tried to look at, see, how different were these kids that we have the data for from everyone else? And they're a little more likely to be female. They were a little more likely to be in certain, you know, middle school grades and high school grades, predictable things. So maybe we're under-representing the most irresponsible kids in the district in this environment. That's possible.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But again, as a district, you have a really great, I mean, internally, you could ask these same questions. You could ping out the five most relevant questions next week and get 95% of response, which I'm quite jealous of.
I didn't have a specific question for you guys, but it was phenomenal just to hear everything that went into this. I guess my question is more to Joe and the part with the PD getting our teachers going, you know, from that enhancement part of the SAMR into the transformation.
So that'll dovetail with our district action plan report coming up in a few minutes.
Is that the point?
That's correct.
Yes.
So that's what's exciting to me is that we've identified a need through your phenomenal research and everything that you went into, and you've used that information to...
Well, we definitely have a lot of, a lot of material here to work with to improve the program.
And I'll say, the mission and vision that you've created for the schools, for the technology program, for all of that, is why we could guide this. I work with, I mean, we all work with schools and districts all around the world, and without that, without that vision and without those statements and without that clarity from the community, we spin our wheels a lot more. I mean, we were able to look at that chart and say, here are the four pillars, here are the sub-questions, what can we get? How close can we get to answering those questions for you? And that's why it worked. Research typically isn't very efficient like that. It's when we have the vision, and our work has shown that time and time again. And Ruben made that point. And it's hard to sort of step back and see that across all of the data we collected, but from your perspectives, I think you will, in that the investments you've made, not only in hardware and professional development, but in the vision. And this idea is definitely alive and well in the classrooms. And we were able to tap into that and look at the right things to make meaning for everyone in the community.
So Ruben, you're familiar with the Trudy-Cop framework?
Yes.
And what's your impression of our plans for that?
Okay, in what sense?
In our ability to move from in a SAMR model to the highest levels of performance.
I think you've got, I think you've got what you need in terms of the infrastructure necessary to move forward. In other words, I think, I think all the basic pieces that you need are in place. It's a question of articulating them around something like, say, the shared practices, for instance, type of approach to make it happen.
So I can completely see how this aligns with communication, collaboration, outreach. There's no doubt that it has transformed our district along those three lines, but the buzzword that you hear continually is improved educational outcomes for students. How do we measure that? How do we know that by adding this technology, we know that we're engaging them more because we're engaging them at a level that they're, that this is their world versus the world that we may have grown up? So clearly that, we're meeting that need. But I guess my question is, what can we directly measure to know that this is actually an improvement in the way that we deliver education?
It's, that's a great question. And the first thing I would say is, you need to look at, say, okay, here's where you need to focus more in a specific area or a specific subject or a specific field, right? And in many cases, it's a question of saying, well, can we have this kind of thermometer to tell us we're going in the right direction? So for instance, I'll suggest that, yes, using something, let's assume you're doing science, right? And the American Physics Society will happily provide you with instruments that allow you to gauge the level of understanding of certain concepts in physics by your students. So you could use those as a sort of before, during, after type instrument to see what you're looking at. The important thing in my mind is always to remember that doesn't give you the entire picture, right? It's just like a doctor saying, look, you know, I'm going to take your blood pressure. Well, if your blood pressure is low, medium, high, whatever it is, doesn't tell you your entire picture of health, but it provides you with a monitoring point that you can say, well, if I change my diet or I'm taking this medication, what's the impact? It doesn't tell me yet what my whole health picture is like, but at least it gives me a point of reference, a point, as a thermometer, if you will, to see what's going. So that's one of the types of things you can look at. The second one is to say, well, if you have specific elements, such as, for instance, engagement, well, there are instruments you can use to measure engagement. So you can say, okay, we're going to look at the question of engagement, and again, we're going to do a sort of before, during, after type study, and we're going to use that instrument to look at that. And again, for me, the key element is to always remember that each of these is just showing you one line, one piece of data along a particular set of things you'd like to measure. Overall learning is a much, much, much more complex thing, but picking a few key directions, such as the ones I mentioned, are, I think, the best place to go, the best place to use as...
I mean, I'd be remiss to not add, you know, typically, when we do an evaluation in the state of Massachusetts and we look at, you know, someone asks about student outcomes, the de facto measure of success in Massachusetts is, we can all say at the same time, the MCAS, right? One of the problems within the community here is that your MCAS performance is quite high, right? And has been traditionally, you know, at the state level, you guys do fairly well, such that looking for, you know, vast improvements over time, if the MCAS is your outcome measure, can be challenging. That said, in the paper, we provide three specific references on how you could take the data that we provided and create a system where you could start to look at the relationship between what students are doing in class as they report in the survey or through classroom observations and performance changes and things like MCAS or an engagement survey or, you know, it's up to the community, again, to figure out what those outcome measures are going to be. But one of the things that we've done is created tools for measuring different implementation aspects that you can then plug in and look at, are our kids who are using math, you know, technology and math in eighth grade in this particular way, outperforming the kids that we know aren't doing this? And start to ask those questions. And we do have research models and designs that help schools and districts look at things like MCAS in that way or, you know, whatever that outcome can be. So this would be, I think, a preliminary step to looking at that question. We talked about doing that in the report. We, with a six-month, the MCAS scores didn't even come out in the time we did the analysis.
Don't you think that's a bit of a slippery slope? That's a conundrum to say, if we're going to look at some very, very traditional metrics like MCAS or SAT or AP scores and so on, isn't that a bit of an apples and oranges for the...
Yes, absolutely. And I said, I use the term de facto measure of success.
Yeah.
And see, might be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, you guys have done such a terrific job in really articulating your vision of how you want this to be. The real question, Damian and I have spent a long time looking at this, is can schools align their mission with their implementation and their assessment to figure out what they want? And I was quite interested to hear that you had joined this Excel network for social emotional learning. That's an outcome you care about. Does this, using this technology as an implementation, does that have an impact on the student outcomes? And maybe the network provides you with some ways of measuring those things. Certainly, we have tools in the field that we know do that. So it's really up to you to define what you want for student outcome and try to...
Yeah, so determining what measures you would like to, you know, focus in on.
And one more thing I'll mention is, you know, this is why I mentioned, you know, an instrument more targeted towards a particular area rather than the big ones, because you're right, it is a slippery slope. And then suddenly it becomes, well, why didn't we see X-point improvement? And the answer is, because these big things like the MCAS, right? There's 10,000 dimensions all lumped together there. And it may happen to be the case, for instance, that the work you're doing with your students in mathematics is doing an amazing job along this direction, but only a thin sliver of that direction happens to be measured by the MCAS. So the MCAS is masking a much bigger improvement because it wasn't designed for that.
Or I'll flip that on you, Ruben, that I think, like many districts across the Commonwealth, unfortunately, a lot of our instruction and assessment practices have been geared towards MCAS and therefore, from a pedagogical standpoint, we're kind of behind the eight ball. The whole substitution piece doesn't shock me. And again, I'm not applying a value to that statement that I just made, but I think it kind of speaks to assessment, design, and the sophistication to get to those higher level of thinking. And I think that's where our challenge as a district lies ahead, but I'm very confident that we have the capacity to get there, like you guys said.
Well, good.
It's kind of like we have to balance both. We have to balance the test with even those engagement learning activities.
And it kind of dovetails that. I think that is part of our large conversation for this school year. I think about it, I put my parent hat on, and if I were to say to any parent, parent to parent, Chi Diane, or Chi Dorothy, what do you truly want for your children as far as outcomes? You're probably not going to look at me in the eye and say, I want high MCAS scores for each of my four boys. You know, and that might be a nice thing to have, but in your heart of hearts, that's not what true learning is all about.
That is not my answer.
And I think this is part of the community-wide conversation of, what are the outcomes that we really want? I'll get off my soapbox.
No, 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 that's fine. I actually just posed that question not because of my beliefs, actually, because I am not concerned with the test scores. I'm concerned that every year that my kid goes to school, that they're excited to go to school, and they're learning, and they're excited to learn the next year, and they're excited to learn more. So that's my educational outcomes. And I'd say that the iPads and that use of technology has clearly achieved it. But I do think that the buzzword is, you know, educational outcomes and how are we measuring them? So that's what people want to know about. Like, okay, we've just added this, you know, I don't even know how much the device is anymore. It's like, what, $800 or something?
Yeah, I had...
Yeah.
About $350.
Oh, God, it's hard.
Well...
But, you know, you're saying, okay, we're going to take a whole different approach to learning here. I mean, we started this five years ago. So what have we produced with it? And everybody's answer is going to be different.
Sure.
My answer is definitely not MCAS scores.
And again, I do keep coming back to, just as Damian was pointing out, just as you were pointing out, you know, keeping of the richness of possibilities for what you can have on the table, right? Because, for instance, let's say I have two students, we'll put student A and student B side by side. Now, both of them turn out to have about the same MCAS score relative to, as I would say, an area of math. But if student A can then take that knowledge and make something they care about, whether it's sculpture, or an architectural object, or whatever it is, and student B cannot, well, you've gotten the same scores of both of them, but there's an additional dimension to the experience of student A that student B lacks. And again, to me, the question always becomes, as you're thinking about, you know, setting up these signposts, checkpoints, whatever, that you keep that richness in mind, so it doesn't all become just that one dimension that somehow misses all of these other aspects.
You know, I think the other thing to remember is balance, and I do think that we are balancing it out. And it reminds me of sitting in on, I don't know if it was second or third grade math, Kristin Bertheo, teaching about all the different methods they give a child to learn how to do a basic algorithm in their own fashion. This is that, learning is that to me. Every kid, and this actually speaks to your action plan too, every kid learns in their own way. So just handing them an iPad versus giving them a model that they can hold in their hand and physically feel, there's going to be a different method that's going to make that connection click in a child's brain. But I do think that the iPad unleashes a lot of possibilities, for sure.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. (applause) Okay, Madam Chair, you ready for a district action plan?
I am. Let's go right into that district action plan.
Okay. You have in your packet a copy of the draft action plans for this school year. Just as a background, they were cultivated largely during the summer months by our district leadership team. First and foremost, as we do every year, looking at our previous year's action plans, what we completed, what is ongoing work, and so on. And I think we have four major goals that are very much a snapshot of the work that needs to be completed. If I had to say what are some overarching themes within these four goals, I see this year as very much a transition year. As you know, this would be the fifth and final year of our current five-year strategic plan. And I see this year as really a year of inquiry and exploration. I've tried to be very explicit with that, particularly with our professional staff, in kind of laying out that this is a year really to learn about new practices and really about reimagining school. I think the vision behind, and the goals and the specific actions that you see here is really around this key question, what do our students need in a modern context? And how do we reimagine our schools to meet their needs? I know at the last school committee meeting on September 11th, Maureen did a fabulous job pitch hitting for me and kind of laying out some of the directions of our professional development. And keep in mind, even though that is the forward-thinking vision, there are still plenty of action steps that continue our ongoing work, particularly curriculum development, social emotional learning, and also improving communication and outreach. So what are the goals? First goal, goal number one, engage in this community-wide exploration of the beliefs and practices that empower students with opportunities for, again, learning in a modern context. What do our kids truly need beyond an MCAS score, really to be successful in a modern economy? So some of the key actions, we had our opening day PD with Will Richardson in October. We have another nationally-known thinker named Bill Daggett coming in and working with our staff. We really want to continue, and I know John has continued, started the conversation at the high school, and it's our goal to have several events throughout the year to push this community-wide conversation about learning and what are your true learning beliefs around learning. We're planning at the November 22 school committee meeting, the work, the documentary, Most Likely to Succeed. One of the co-authors, Ted Dintersmith, will be coming to us to kind of do an intro and a question and answer session. We are aligning our PD and also some prototypical educator goals around things like student agency, inquiry, and authentic learning. We're making that an emphasis this year. We're also planning on conducting visits to other schools to observe innovative learning approaches. And then, as I alluded to, it's our intent by, after the holidays, to form a strategic planning committee involving all stakeholders, and ultimately having a new district strategic plan for your approval next August. Goal two kind of really speaks to, again, social emotional learning, but it's also looking at some of the supports that we have in place for all of our students. I know very shortly, I'm thinking probably October, November, right, Maureen, we will have a presentation on the updated DECAP or District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. And if you recall, Maureen and Dennis led the team, and I believe you approved it, I want to say it was probably three years ago now, but there's some revisions to it that detail best practices in SEL. We're looking at reviewing and revising our district's RTI process in each of the three levels, elementary, middle, and high. And kind of aligned with that is conducting an audit of our student support services in really an internal audit to look at our staffing patterns, but also the effectiveness of services. I talked a little bit about our membership in the Excel network, but a promotion of the growth mindset through all of our district classrooms. Having a few parent events throughout the school year so that parents can be more aware of the importance of SEL. And then, as we talked about in our last year's action plans, creating more of those critical partnerships with community-based agencies for the provision of wraparound services for students or families. We're finding more and more of a demand for that, and creating those partnerships is really critical. So our third goal kind of speaks to curriculum. By July, the district will review, revise, and adapt the curriculum to support modern learning practices. We continue in earnest with our curriculum mapping process. A majority of our courses have completed stage two, which is the assessment portion of the mapping, and we will be progressing to stage three, which kind of speaks to instructional materials and methodologies. You just heard the formal evaluation of our one-to-one learning program. Really, the key piece is what type of action are we going to be taking upon the report's I know Maureen is chomping at the bit to, working with our curriculum assistants, to give a presentation on looking out through a period of six to 12 years, what would be the district's formal curriculum review and revision cycle, looking at various content areas. Something that we haven't done in about a good five years, but establishing a learning walkthrough, but really focusing on one particular school to promote looking, observing, but then future dialogue on specific practices that are aligned with modern learning practices. And then, thanks for the assist, Sean, but looking at something known as the TruDucott model. TruDucott being what I would term as a forced acronym, standing for Technology-Rich Unit Design and Classroom Observation Template, that kind of speaks to getting people to think about the tasks that they create that involve technology, and how do they really promote higher order of thinking? And then, we're thinking of retooling our one-to-one learning showcase that we've done typically towards the end of March over the last three years, and kind of establishing a community celebration known as the Modern Learning Showcase, where our faculty members can share their experiences of what they're doing in their classrooms with various learning pathways. And then, last but not least, something that I always say is our perpetual goal will be us enhancing two-way communication to celebrate student learning, supporting educators, engaging parents as partners in their child's education. So some of our key actions, we hope to launch very shortly, something that is very short and concise on each of our four school websites, and also our district website, a quick reference guide. So if you're looking for a certain program, a certain director, or something, the person's name, phone number, and contact information is there. I know John is working in conjunction with Mary Ann and also with Dave. They've actually formed a class at NIPM called the Inspired Learning Podcast, where, what have you got, about six or seven students right now enrolled in that? Four? Okay. Where these kids are actually going to be producing podcasts based upon their interests and interviewing people and actually launching this, really as a means of very authentic learning. We talked about, when we reviewed this summer, really getting more people using the enhanced features at the school level of our Blackboard Connect Mass email system. So more training there and greater usage of it. We'd like to also, this spring, conduct a formal audit of how well we're communicating classroom to parents, probably through surveys, and also doing an audit of how well we're using social media across the district. We talked about doing the second launch of our K-12 Insight Survey. The game plan is to do that before the holidays and using that data to inform our strategic planning process. And something that we feel pretty passionate about, and I think we've done some of this, but some districts across the country that are really the head of the curve have really gone the route of being very thoughtful about creating a district branding guide, of ensuring that there's commonality between the district and the schools, but really making that align with what are our core beliefs around learning? What are our core values, mission, vision, and so on? I'll have a few exemplars when we get closer to that point to share with you of some districts across the country that have done an exceptional job about it. And it's really about communicating to all of our stakeholders, what are we all about? And what do we want for our kids? So something that we're really, really excited to roll out, and I see that going hand-in-hand with our strategic planning process. So those are really, that's not everything that's in the action plan, but those are some of the major bullet points around the four goal areas. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. I know that was a quick slosh through that.
In reading through it, it's extremely ambitious. I think we've certainly set a plan in motion that kind of go, kind of hold your feet to the thigh or so.
Sure.
And I'm excited to see it take place.
But some of those folks sitting over there are the ones that really pushing.
Nice job.
So a lot of their ideas.
There's a lot of September 27th and the 80s in there.
Yeah, we noticed that recently.
A lot of them.
It's been a busy week.
It's very ambitious, but I'm excited where it's going to take place.
But realize, and we'll, you know, next meeting, we'll talk about the individual school improvement plans. The principals very much work with their school councils, use this document to inform what they're looking to do at the school level. So it very much informs and tailors down to the individual school level.
Okay. It's great.
So a motion to approve our...
We have a motion to approve the district action plan.
Motion to approve the district action plan for 2017.
Sorry.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the next item under new business is something that I'd like to carry over after our executive session of August 21st. And that is specifically changing Dr. Coleman's title and job specifications from Director of Curriculum to Assistant Superintendent of Schools. You have in your packet a series of materials. Probably the most critical would be taking a look at the existing job description for Director of Curriculum, and then juxtaposing it with a new proposed Assistant Superintendent of Schools job description. I'd like to just spend a couple minutes kind of laying out any, laying out my rationale for this request to you, and then making a couple points very, very clear. I think, first and foremost, is we do every year, looking at our previous year's action I think first and foremost, the rationale is in looking at Maureen and her five-year tenure here within the district, she has done an absolute exemplary job in her role as Director of Curriculum. I know many Assistant Superintendents throughout the state, I can say very honestly, there's no one that approaches her skill set, her people skills, her ability to work with all stakeholders in an incredibly productive way. With that said, she's taken on numerous leadership roles, not only in the area of curriculum or in all aspects of teaching and learning, but she's also, very naturally, very organically, has taken on a whole series of management roles as well, and most recently, being involved in the collective bargaining process with all five of our associations, and also doing work in maintaining quality relationships with all of our associations. Furthermore, she's also acted as liaison to the Department of Education on such key issues as Title IX, civil rights compliance, and also the multitude of mandated training for all employees in such areas as sheltered English instruction and also restraint training. If you look at the proposed job description for Assistant Superintendent Schools, you see what the difference is, what some of the additions would be in red as far as this new proposed job description versus the existing. You see the multitude of management specifications that have been delineated. I would also note a couple noteworthy additions. First and foremost being number 20, serving as the district's communications coordinator, providing standards and exemplars for effective school-wide and classroom communication, or classroom-to-family communication to ensure consistency across the district's four schools. We see that as a major initiative and a major key undertaken. And then also, really being the person to, if you look at 28, to spearhead the entire technology operation, working to supervise and evaluate both the Director of Technology Integration and the Director of Technology Operations. If you also note, I also put in the packet our existing organizational chart, which has not been updated since November of 2010, with a new proposed organizational chart. And in my humble opinion, the new organizational chart is very, very clear as far as the delineation of responsibilities and supervision. And I found, not very frequently, but I think with the Director of Curriculum position, oftentimes there can be a certain degree of ambiguity as far as delineation in the hierarchy. In moving to this position, I think it's very, very clear that as Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Cohen would be second in command from an organizational standpoint. I also included in the packet kind of a survey that we've done over the last few months as far as looking at the Blackstone Valley and also regionally as far as did districts have either an Assistant Superintendent or a Director of Curriculum? As you can see, of the 12 districts in the valley, six out of 12 currently have Assistant Superintendents. You see where the salary ranges are both for FY '16 and FY '17. I have made adjustments and was part of the approved FY '18 salary for Maureen to kind of get her to a place where she was a little more competitive with her peers in the position. But my proposal would be for FY '18, there will be absolutely no increase in salary from what has been approved for her FY '18 salary. I guess I also want to make it very, very clear that this proposed change is a change in title and a change in job responsibilities. There's absolutely no intent to now bring on a new curriculum director in addition to an Assistant Superintendent. And there is no plans now, nor will there be any intentions of adding any additional positions. So with all that said, I think this is something that has happened very, very naturally, very organically. You know, as I also said in my background notes, in her five-year tenure, in addition to doing an exemplary job, Maureen has also earned a superintendent's certificate. And she, as you know, just this last spring, earned her doctoral degree. So I feel very, very strongly that this is something that is very much due. I think Maureen has been very, very loyal to this district. I know her intent is to stay part of our team because I think she views that her work, she's got plenty of work ahead, as I do. So I am asking that you approve my request to change Dr. Cohen's title from Director of Curriculum to Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
I just want to mention one other thing that we talked about earlier as well, just so that we're on the record for it. The position as we discussed was a strategic value to the district. And the fact that we have a fully qualified candidate for it is also a very positive thing. But this position allows the curriculum director post and a number of other functions to take a leadership position in the district, which hasn't always been, it hasn't always been facilitated in the past.
Sure, and when I was hired as superintendent six and a half years ago, there was no Assistant Superintendent, there was no curriculum director and so on. So my first couple of years of the job, I was pretty much scrambling with the principals to do the many key pieces that she's done. So there is precedence in this district. The district has had in the past an Assistant Superintendent. There's also had a Director of Curriculum. You know, unfortunately, in the height of the Great Recession, the position was cut. You know, I hope and pray, you know, we're not going to go through another Great Recession again. But I can't underscore how important the position is. But more importantly, I can't underscore how important it is the person that we have in the position. We have somebody with a tremendous skill set, who's very loyal to this district and has vision, of course.
May I entertain a motion?
How do you even say this one? Motion to change the title of Dr. Maureen Cohen to Assistant Superintendent. Is that sufficient, motion?
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. You do provide tremendous value to our district and a gorgeous continued leadership in the district in this role.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, a student trip?
Okay, you have it in your packet, a request for approval for a trip to the Galapagos Islands. Hi, Kay.
I'll come over here. I'll be quick, too. It's getting late. Yeah, so you'll see, I included, so I'm here. Well, thank you for letting me be on the agenda. I'm the Italian teacher at NIPM, and this will be my ninth trip. This year we're going to Italy, so it's kind of been an Italy-every-other-year situation, and then just finding somewhere the kids would want to go on off-years. And I kind of took into consideration that World Challenge usually does South America. And this upcoming summer, they decided to do Iceland. So I was like, oh, I want to go to the Galapagos. I'm sure I can find some kids that want to go and that tap that market, that emerging kids and Spanish-speaking kids who really want to go to South America and practice because World Challenge isn't offering that this year. So I took the recommendation of Julie Madrazan, who did this years ago with World Challenge. She said it's just the most amazing place ever. I've never been, so I'm very excited. It would be during April vacation next year, so 2019. It is an 11-day trip, so it's one day more than my Italy trips usually are, just because it's kind of farther to get to. So we'd leave the Wednesday before vacation and be home on the Saturday. The price is pretty on point with what Italy is too, which I was surprised about. I kind of thought it'd be more expensive. But it's going to be $3,800, and that's with the $200 early bird special that on the sheet, it says that it goes till Thursday, but it's going to be extended to the end of October for the students. It'll be open to any student in the school. So I'm toying with the idea of going, coming down to maybe talking to Jen and coming down to NISCO and seeing if the eighth graders, because they will be ninth graders next year, wanting to participate as well.
What's the target number?
So I told the tour, cut 20 to be conservative. I would assume it's kind of like my Italy trips that I can take upwards of 40 if the interest is there. I mean, you can go with at least as few as six. So even if it wasn't a huge group, I would still do it.
What is the age range typically, if we, if you're looking at the eighth grade, who would be ninth graders next year? What is the age range typically of the students who go on these trips?
Oh, it's, I mean, there are huge amounts of schools that do middle school trips too, so this wouldn't be on a young range at all. I normally, for Italy, do only juniors and seniors because I know I'm doing it every other year. So kind of, they're a little older and they've taken Italian hopefully a whole time, and they can speak Italian. So this is definitely a once-in-a-lifetime trip. I would probably not do again. So I wanted to kind of give it to as many kids as possible who wanted to do it. So 15, I don't think is too young. I mean, it's, we have as many chaperones and it's not any different. I'm excited to go hiking, go snorkeling, see the big turtles, and I guess there's sea lions and stuff there too when you're on the equator.
Is the inner science teacher in you?
Oh, yeah.
Come out, Kay.
I don't know about that. I am going to team up with the science teachers to try and tap them and get their students to come and have them chaperone so that we can have them as a great resource because, yes, I don't know that much about the wildlife and things like that. I just want to see it. And then you do spend a few days in Kyoto too, so you get to see the capital at the door. And I didn't realize it was at 10,000 feet elevation, so now I'm a little nervous, but it's fine. And, yeah, and that's pretty much it. The price is, has to be where it is. Also, I talked to the tour, and they said this is their, the tour that's most popular right now. So a lot of students are doing it, but you have flights in the middle to get from Kyoto to the islands, so that's why it is a tiny bit more expensive than what Italy has been. But I was still surprised, a sand or four for a trip like this is pretty impressive. So and it's the same as the other trips that I've run. Everything is included except for lunch every day.
This says lunches.
Oh, that's new.
I just read it when you said it. Number three.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner daily. Alrighty, then. Take that back, so spending money, that's it. Yeah, that's different. Usually all their trips, they don't lunch.
Maybe the food is cheaper.
As you said it, I was reading it, so.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Yeah. I know, I'm very excited. They, I heard that UNESCO might close the Galapagos down to, or start limiting how many people can go visit. So to get in there before then would be nice.
Make a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the NIPM student trip to the Galapagos Islands in April of 2019.
Second, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Are there any correspondence?
No correspondence.
This time? Other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? Future agenda items, the report on the MURSD San Sebastian Student Exchange on October 16th, and then the superintendent's evaluation for '16, '17, also on October 16th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:52.